I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion regarding approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Take one. Having a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, clearing then the motion carries. Moving into discussion, what's before us right now is the fact that we had two levies on the ballot that failed and we need to map out a way of where we're gonna go from here. I'm sure all of you have received numerous amount of emails from people saying, please run the levy again. So we have that option. We also have the option to listen to the community because they have spoken. So, we need to have discussion.
And who wants to start?
Sounds like you.
First of all, I want to welcome all these folks. Obviously, they have a vested interest either as parents or community members or maybe some staff members. What we have experienced is something that we rarely experience in the school district with the value of community support with levy. That really is, in my view, probably a misleading statement because the vote was so limited in number as compared to the number of parents that we have. You know, we have forty-seven hundred odd students, so we got at least nine, ten thousand parents out there.
Right.
Plus, a lot of other folks who have vested interests and yet we got half that many votes.
Right.
So, I'm gonna suggest that we really haven't heard from the community as a whole.
Okay.
And on that basis, I think we should rerun our levies.
Okay.
I agree. I think we might need to look at the length of the six-year. Quite possibly shorten that.
Okay.
But I do think that we need to rerun the levies. What that looks like, if it's exactly the same or if it's slightly different, that's, you know, that's gonna be a lot of work that we all have to put in over the next couple of months to get that word out.
Well, the dilemma also is we have to have whatever language and whatever changes we choose to make right away.
I know, March twenty-seventh.
March twenty-seventh? Okay. So, there's that that we're also pressing against that deadline. Input date?
I don't think it was advertised very well. I didn't see any signs. You know how you're driving home from work and you, oh, I gotta vote today.
Right.
There was none of that to the most levy.
Correct.
I don't know.
And I understand that we didn't do, we didn't have teachers out on corners. I think that that, some, some people really disliked that in the past of having teachers and students out on corners. People really voiced that concern, but at the same time, maybe it is what we need. Maybe it is what we need to have people see how vested we all are in our kids and our district.
And the yard signs.
Yep.
If I say no? People already said, we've already been down this road. When they say no, they mean no. The last levy, we fought tooth and nail and we won by what, forty-two people or something? Everybody I've heard from, I've heard from nobody other than the emails today that wasn't aware of it. People I heard from that I was reminding to vote said they weren't voting for it because they're tired of paying taxes and the economy and the way things are. So, I understand that puts the district in a hard spot, but I think you're gonna make the community even more mad if you do that. We already, we've already done this and we already know what the backlash is. So...
Do we know what we're looking at if we choose not to rerun the levy? Like where we are going to accomplish a reduction in eleven million dollars?
Yeah, we spent some time yesterday just kind of creating a list of what that could look like and it's close to a hundred staff certified and classified. Um, no security program, no extracurricular. I mean, we just went through the things that, that didn't pull teachers out of classrooms. Uh, but even doing that, fifty-five of the hundred classroom teachers.
But how would we have no security staff given that the, the states approved three hundred million to be given to districts for security? Why would security be one of the things we would do?
Well, that's, this, this was based just on the money we have right now because they're still hashing out through J-FAC, so we don't know for sure what that's gonna look like.
Right.
I mean, obviously, I'm a strong proponent for our safety program. That would not be a place I'd want to cut. But when you're looking at nine point five two million dollars, it's just, it's a lot. It's gonna be hard to get there.
Let's, let's talk about globally for a moment and then we can get into some more specifics. You know, we have a finite budget every year.
Correct.
Eighty-five percent of that goes for wages and benefits.
Right.
If you cut seventy-five or twenty-five percent, which is what this amounts to, out of the budget, you're automatically into personnel. And so, which personnel have to go?
Right.
Along with a lot of other things in the process. The, the, the thing that really bothers me is that, you know, when I ran to the board, I said that every decision we make needs to be based on what's good for kids.
Right.
How can we cut twenty-five percent of the budget which we know is gonna affect personnel be good for kids?
Right, okay, yeah.
So, that's, you know, that's, that's a tough decision.
But we don't know that. We haven't looked at that. That's information that we are always given. We, the board, has never looked at the budget to see where the line item is. We've never looked at what is out there that we don't get funded for, that we are paying for. You know, I think there's a lot of, I mean, we have a short time now. We only have till the twenty-seventh. But we, I mean...
Yeah, well, I asked for that information back in December and I still have yet to get it, so.
Right, right.
We'll start there.
And that's, that's one of the things is that we really don't know. We don't, we, we're all just sort of grabbing at straws thinking, you know, well, this is, you know, what will happen. But, I mean, I, I have no information to know that beyond a shadow of a doubt.
I'm scratching my head. I'm only trying to figure out exactly where, where, you know, where you are with that. And I understand what you're saying. We, you know, we don't get into the weeds a lot of times with, you know, with budget. But it's, you know, it's, in my mind, it's a fairly simple picture.
Right, well, we don't have to get into the weeds, but the board is obligated to set the budget and this board has yet to set a budget. This board is given after it's all decided and then our name gets stamped on it.
Well, I, I thought we had a pretty good budget workshop before we adopted the last budget, you know, in terms of going through it, you know, by program by program and the general fund and so on and so forth. So, again, you know, we don't get into the minutia detail.
Right, sure.
But, but certainly the overview is there for us.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, in this situation, I, again, it's pretty clear that if you're gonna cut nine and a half billion dollars out of the general fund budget and you know at the same time that eighty-five percent of that budget is gonna be for personnel costs, you're automatically into personnel. So, you know, we can go to the extent of saying which personnel have to go if, if we don't...
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that, that there would be jobs at, at risk. I absolutely do not disagree with that.
I mean, that decision affects people. It affects families. It affects the economy of the community.
Right.
That's nine and a half million dollars that doesn't flow through the community and, and so we affect business. We affect all kinds of things. And I understand that, you know, some people have a lot of heartburn about taxes. And I would venture to say, well, as many people in, in this room, very few would come up to the taxes that I pay, the property taxes. If you pay more than twenty grand a year, they don't listen to you. But up to that point, you know, I pay as much taxes as anybody and I, and I say, we, we owe it to the kids in this school district to do what's right.
Well, we can run it again. I mean, that's fine. I'm just saying that we've been down this road. The community is pretty staunch when it comes to voting and how they vote, but...
You know, and I respect everyone's opinion.
Right.
I mean, I voted no on issues in the past, you know, for one reason or another. But, you know, when it comes to doing what's right for kids, I, you know, that's, that's a different ballgame in my, in my case. And I think we have to premise our decisions on that. And that doesn't just say that somebody doesn't have a right to vote no, they can vote no as long as, as they want and some of them do.
Right, right.
And, and that's fine. I think our problem is that we didn't get the yes go out. And I, I premised that on what I said to start with and that is that we really haven't heard from the community as a whole. We heard from this segment, which is, which is actually less than half of our parents.
A lot of the emails that I've received have said that we just didn't even spread the word to our schools. So, of course, nothing was done at the school level. Can I ask why that is?
Um, I don't think that's an accurate statement. We definitely did things at the school level.
Okay. Well, I just, I've received numerous emails stating that.
And I did too. Um, I was actually a little bit alarmed at the number of people who felt like they didn't know. Um, there was a lot of communication out to parents. What we didn't do was go to each school face to face and meet with, with parents in the schools. Um, we did all of the community meetings and invited parents to all of those meetings, um, but we didn't go to the schools. Um, however, the principals and the teachers were sharing information with parents at the schools. But, so, if we, if the board chooses to rerun the levy, I mean, we definitely have, based on the input that we got from a lot of patrons, um, we got some really good feedback and input as far as what, where, what we missed and what we need to do differently.
Yeah, 'cause it's still on the reader board. At the, at the middle school, I just saw it when I, when I drove by. You know, the only signs I saw in, in, were in Apple and they all said, vote no. Sorry.
But, but at least they said vote.
Yeah, they did say vote. They said, no taxes, no levies. Of course, I didn't pay attention to the sign, but that's what the signs said.
Well, you know, I, I think we need to take a collective responsibility for what happened.
Yeah.
You know, I think our, our district staff did a tremendous job in trying to get appropriate information out to the public and you didn't reach far enough, wide enough and deep enough. And, you know, I, I feel as badly about that as probably as anyone can because I've been through many of the elections in the past, in the past. I know what it takes to, to get the job done. And I didn't probably share some things that I should have in terms of how to get the job done. There are a lot of things that we could do differently if we have another chance. In terms of getting the right word out to the public and get, get the word spread wide and far and deep.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you that my phone rang off the hook from the very first time this started. And I spent the majority of time, so I can't say I didn't put in the effort because, believe me, I talked to a lot of people.
Well, and I did.
And I put in the effort to explain to them what it did and it's line itemed out. If the money doesn't come in, there's no money to pay for it. I also explained to the people, because people still don't understand that the state does not pay. I finally just narrowed it down to say the state pays for a body and a desk. That's it. Because it's too much explaining. So, I'm still, four years later, and the community's still growing. And I mean, it was daily. There wasn't a day go by that I didn't have a call or multiple calls with people asking about the levy and the money and how it's used and all that. And I'm still educating people that have been here all their life on what the state doesn't do, you know? So, I don't know that the word wasn't spread. I just don't, I mean, yeah, there weren't signs everywhere, I guess, or, or what have you, but a lot of the emails came in, talked about, um, you know, were, were, uh, written as if had they known this or that, they could have done this or that, but yet they told me in the email how they did know and they did vote and that they did talk. So, it's like, well, if you knew, then why didn't you take the initiative then to do it? So, you know, I think a lot of the emails that came in, all those people knew, they voted. I don't know that I didn't have anybody that said they didn't vote. I voted, you know? I talked to everybody I knew and anybody that called me and they voted. So, I don't think it's all us and I think that, uh, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, I think they did a great job with the community and going to everybody. I mean, they did podcast, they did everything they could possibly do. Yeah, they're, everybody, no matter what we do, we can always look back and say we did better. So, I think it's just an unfortunate situation and I think, given the amount of money, the amount of the budget, it's, it sort of sends everybody over the edge, but I don't think that we can't overcome it. I mean, we, you know, and I don't know at all what the money's gonna be earmarked for from the governor either.
No, we don't. That's one of the problems.
Right. We don't know what any, and that was another thing I was explaining.
Budgeting, you know, is, is a real difficulty because you don't know what, what the dollars are at the total and you don't know how they're gonna get earmarked.
Right.
And a lot of times our hands are tied in what we can do with some of those funds.
Yeah, the other thing that they, I've spent a lot of time explaining to people is why we can't wait until November. Number one, school's already in session and number two, because our budget's already been submitted, you know? And we're, we're stuck waiting on the legislators to finish before we even know what the heck we can do. So, people are still confused on that. People still have the idea that we're sneaking in a vote, you know?
And it doesn't, and it doesn't work when you're on a July first, if you're fiscal year.
Right.
Some people assume that we're on a calendar year basis, we're not.
Right, right.
You know, and so consequently, if, if we, if we've only had November as a voting date, you would be voting on an issue almost eighteen months in advance of, of the year you're actually gonna go into that budget.
Right.
In other words, it would be the next July and twelve months beyond that, that that budget would flow out.
Yeah.
You know, it's almost impossible to, to budget appropriately in that time period.
So, I...
No, I, I think you're right.
I talked to a lot of people and out there where I'm at and I, yeah. Probably different in other zones, but all I can do is speak for my own, you know?
Any further discussion?
I'm gonna put it out there. I think our community is mad at us. Not necessarily this board, but the previous board, the previous administration. There's a lot of people that are pissed and they're showing it, I think. I don't know. I mean, if I didn't have a vested interest in this school or the school district, I'd be pissed. I'd vote no. But trying to make it better, you know? So, I just think there's a lot of people in the last twenty years that got jaded by the school district.
Yeah.
I, I think we've got a lot of negative winds blowing in our face. It isn't just that. I, you know, part of it may go clear back to the Phil Bond election.
Yeah, exactly.
That was the biggest no I ever saw in my life.
Yeah.
Well, not only that, but...
And, you know, some of the negativity that ran out of that is still being carried, I think, forward.
Yeah. Or when you say you're gonna do something with money and it doesn't get dug. And the board tells you to do something and you don't do it, then you just spend that money on something else and then there's no accountability.
Well, but, but that's not where we are today and that's not where we are.
Well, no, we're not, but I'm just saying the past has affected...
Well, you can carry baggage for as long as you want, but sooner or later, you need to let it go, I think.
Well, I agree.
Yeah, I'm ready for that train.
Keep telling me.
You know, I, I just think we need to take a forward-looking approach to it. I really do. You know, we, we know what some of the negatives are of the past and whatever mistakes were made, were made. They're, they're watering another bridge, as I always say, and you gotta look forward. And the only appropriate way to look forward is to take a look and say, what's best for kids? If you, if you can't get a positive answer for that, then we're done. You just, you just gotta approach it that way. You gotta look forward and take this positive approach you can. There are a lot of things we could do with another campaign, a lot of things. And I think we've had some discussions about that, but certainly I spent one whole night without sleep thinking back over the years of, you know, the things that we did that made a difference.
I'm just wondering if actually the, the voting date, because where it is and people aren't used to voting, you know, in March, that was the biggest effect outside of everything else. Because I do think that I did, that was some chatter I heard was people didn't know, you know? And a few people I had called to remind, they didn't even know they were supposed to be and they asked me, what are we voting on? What's, you know, so I sent them a sample ballot and all that, but a lot of people, I think, that the March thing could have played against us too, you know?
Well, and that's part of the information that we have to get out there, obviously, in a broader sense. It's, you know, we do have the opportunity to have elections in, in March or in May.
Right.
And there are reasons for that. It has to do with our budgeting process.
Right.
And when the legislature gets done with their work and so on and so forth, people need to understand that. We don't generally talk about that very much because it's kind of a topic that we have to deal with internally. But when we ask people for their support, they need to understand the full picture. And, you know, I, I'll just lay it out there. I don't think we gave them the full picture and I don't fault anyone for that. I think it's a collective responsibility to do that.
Yeah, honestly, I was shocked it didn't pass, to tell you the truth. I didn't even stay up to watch the results because I was confident it was gonna pass.
Complacency was part of the problem.
Yeah, and then it did it. And I was like, I looked up all the numbers. I just, I couldn't believe it. And not everybody even voted, um, less people voted for the plant facility levy than voted for the supplemental levy. So, I don't know if they didn't know it was on the ballot. I don't know what happened there. But I did notice that too, that the numbers were different.
With it being a two-sided ballot, I think that may have been some of the issue.
Yeah.
There are a lot of pieces to, to this whole thing. You know, it's more, more complex and not regard, I think, than we realize in terms of the number of reasons why people either didn't vote or didn't vote in favor of both or didn't vote in favor of one or the other. I mean, you can, but a lot of that, you know, boils down to recrimination. I just don't think we should go there. I think we should look forward and do what's right for kids.
Any further discussion? Does anybody wanna bring forth a motion?
Do we have a recommendation from the superintendent?
I would recommend that we rerun the supplemental levy, um, for sure. I, we haven't discussed if running both hurt one or the other. I'm not sure because we didn't get any, I didn't get any of that feedback from patrons. But, um, the supplemental is so critical to everything we do for kids. Maybe, I don't know. I, I am torn because we need the money for our facilities as well. But, um, I definitely am in favor of rerunning the levies and we, um, we don't know for sure what the legislators are going to do. We know that, uh, kind of what came out of J-FAC, but then all of those dollar amounts get written into bills and they have to go through the House and the Senate and things get tweaked. Uh, so we won't know until they're all done exactly where those buckets of money are going to end up. But, um, we could rerun the levy at the amounts that we asked. Ultimately, as a board, you know, if we end up getting money from the state that actually is designed to be used for something our levy supports, the board could make the decision not to, not to make the full collection if you wanted to take advantage of that and reduce the taxes on our patrons. But, because we won't know, really, we won't have that, um, we won't know the full picture before we have to have everything submitted to the, to the counties. So, I, at this point, I would recommend that we rerun it.
Both of them? Yeah. And I think there has to be a better layman's explanation and forget all the tax rate and all that. There has to be a very simple layman's explanation because the other thing I run into all the time is people think we're like every other political subdivision and that we tax based on a percentage of their appraised value and that is not the case. They do not grasp the fact that they're voting for this amount of money, period. Has nothing to do with the appraised value.
Does it go up and down?
That the, that the county's just the collection point in which the district gets the money. People, that's a, that's a huge issue, you know, and they just don't understand it and they just turn off. And not only this district. I heard that from people in Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, too. You know, the, the explanation has to be simpler, you know? And I do, and they do need to understand that, you know, they complain about, they have concerns. I won't call it a complaint, and they have valid concerns about the condition of a lot of our buildings, which we're trying very hard to remedy, you know, extremely hard. Yeah, I just think that if, if the board decides to do that, then really somebody has to work hard on the language to make sure that it's simply efficient. Yeah.
And ultimately, I mean, I know that this is a team effort, but I, I led the charge and we, we missed, we just missed opportunities. And so, um, that's weighing heavily on me and we got a room filled with people who are concerned about their jobs. And I would like the opportunity to get the word out to our parents and make sure that our parents have an opportunity to cast a vote. Whether they vote yes or no, I can't control that, but I do wanna give them an opportunity to do that.
I don't hold you solely responsible. You send it to the people, the people have to, have to take some responsibility in knowing how their children's lives are affected. We, we can't do everything for them. We can't provide the education and meals and, and all these services and, you know, trans...
Help their end to the vote.
Yeah, we, we can't do that. So, don't, I would not take that personally. I do not think it's a referendum on you whatsoever.
No.
I appreciate that, but, um, that's just the...
I know you feel that way because you're...
It's the cloak that you wear, right, in your seat, so?
Yeah, well, that's because you're a, you're a good leader.
I will move to rerun of levies.
I would second.
Clarifying question. At the start of this, you did mention maybe not doing the one for six years. Have you thought any further on that or did you wanna discuss that? I mean, 'cause it was...
I just, I just know that that was something like, Ramona and I know, I know we both had brought that up as a concern that that amount wasn't gonna...
It's not gonna carry us.
Probably carry us for the six years, but... If we're having, right, right. And if we're having a hard time passing, I mean, that's...
But if you...
if we're having, right, right, and if we're having a hard time passing, I mean, that's, that would at least.
But if we, if we run it for two years, then at least we have an opportunity to build favor in the eyes of our community. And with what we're doing right now, on top of the fact that we are going to have to go for a bond. We need at least one, if not two, more schools. Not to even go beyond that, but we need more, and we are not gonna be able to do it without a bond. So, if we lessen the plant facility to two years, and continue to build back the trust within our community, and right some of those wrongs that we're not looking in the past at, but we're acknowledging they're there, and realizing that, you know, we need this community to flourish with us, and it's only through the investment in our children. There may be some favor in that, so I toss that out there. There's a motion and a second on.
I would amend my motion to reduce it to two years from the six years for that levy. But I hold strong with rerunning both levies.
The second will accept.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All heartedly.
Any opposed? Any? Four in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
We were wondering why you all came.
It's Bob's stunning good looks, right?
Y'all are welcome to stay for the remainder, or if you want to leave, you're more than welcome to leave as well. We're just, the next item is to go over the chief finance officer's job description, so if you all are interested, please stay.
Thank you again, all of you, for coming and supporting our kids.
To the job description that was provided to us for the chief finance officer. Can you open that, for example, so we can read it?
Sure.
Thank you. And just make it a full screen. Those arrows, those four arrows up in the upper right-hand corner, they're right there, yep.
This one?
Yep. And now you can make it larger. I assume that Mr. Wallace actually wrote this, or is this one that we already had?
This one we already had.
Okay.
The one thing that we did do, his current title is chief operations, financial office and operations. We weren't sure we were gonna get somebody who had a lot of background in the operations side of it, so we took that part out of the job description, so that this really just focuses on the chief financial officer responsibilities. And we have a plan for how to handle the operations side of it.
Well, I'm curious, because it says it supervises office finance staff, which makes absolute sense. Child nutrition and other personnel.
Child nutrition, we left there simply because there's, there are so many reports, and it's all financial things that Brian has had to help Kevin with. So, that made sense to us, how the other parts of the operation team could join us at our district leadership team meetings and just, we'd have weekly check-ins. We kept the other, I mean, the one that this came from, we made a copy of it and just took the operations part off. We could put that back in, if that's how you would, to read. I just, it will give me an opportunity to build some relationships and work more closely with the operations directors, if we do it this way. And that's not to say it has to be that way forever, but it was an opportunity.
No, I'm just trying to understand exactly what Brian does, and who all he supervises, and why those components were never really given to us.
So, he currently supervises transportation, facilities, child nutrition, and technology. And then also his finance department.
Okay. And with all of the other departments, was that more on the operations side that he was overseeing them for? Or was there some financial component with respect to finances of the district that was why he was overseeing those?
I don't necessarily, I don't think it's necessarily the financial side of it, because any of the decisions that we made, you know, if Mike was asking for permission to buy a truck for facilities, that came to the district leadership team.
Right.
So, that, none of those decisions were made in a vacuum, so it was really the operations part of the work.
Okay, making sure that the department was running as it should?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you say that, sir?
Yes, I mean, I think that on lots, sometimes it's in a way like a superintendent job. If your directors are really functioning at a high level, then a lot of times you really, things are going well and you're not involved. However, it sort of, it can depend, and circumstances change. So, for example, transportation, you know, we had Suzie Moore, when she was the director, now Jessica, who are very, I mean, they're new in a lot of things, so they have personnel issues. They'll have some things at the state level on state reporting that they've never seen. And so, since I was aware of those things, I could help navigate it through. They've never done an RFP to buy buses, and just all the paperwork and some of those things are involved, safety training. And, you know, obviously, the transportation director, Barbara Suzie, he'd been a veteran for quite a while, so he was familiar with that. Same thing with Chad when he first started on tech, he'd never went through the E-Rate program. IC reporting was new, and so as they get more experienced, really you have less that you help sort of, and way mentor in some ways, just because I've been exposed to a lot of those things, so.
Now, can I just have to announce, thank you.
Do you wanna use one for here?
Nope, actually, I've been thinking about this when we have meetings, nobody watching ever sees anything we're talking about, because it's just a scrolling of the agenda.
Can you put on this job description?
No, I don't see anything to be concerned about, I just ask Brian, maybe you've had an opportunity to look at it. Is there anything that, in terms of the finance side of things, is there anything missing in the suggestion responsibilities?
I think this is when I applied, probably, I'd have, probably, I can look at it again if there's anything, you know, real quick, there's a quick edit. I didn't look at this today. I think so. I can look, I mean, a couple districts have recently posted to some, so we can, I could quickly cross-reference to see if they're having, if there's maybe a common theme or some language in there that we don't have here.
Yeah, I looked for some today, but I didn't see any locally, the job descriptions, because I was gonna do that, see what the two, what the two looked like.
Yeah, many are very similar.
Yeah.
The only thing I see that might be a little bit of a concern is, you know, qualifications are pretty high. And to find somebody who meets all of that would be a real challenge, I think. So, we need to maybe at least understand that there might need to be a little bit of give and take regarding the qualifications.
We didn't change the qualifications, with the exception of, I think it did have preference that they given for leadership experience, and it had facilities and some of the other operations parts of the district. We took those out, but other than that, we didn't change it.
I think the summary doesn't match up with the qualifications or expectations, because the summary provide, providing effective leadership in school finance, financial planning and budgeting, absolutely purchasing yes, facilities and maintenance, property management, transportation, child nutrition, technology, and other operational functions in a physically responsible manner. So, if this person is no longer gonna.
We need to take those.
Yeah.
And I also don't understand why, under qualifications, it states other qualifications, as the board of superintendent may find appropriate and acceptable. I mean, if someone's gonna be applying, they should already know what the qualifications are that we expect.
That was in there, we left it, but we can take that out?
Yeah, I would take that out.
Yeah, I agree with that one, yeah.
The other one that was hard for me is number five, I'm not sure. Demonstrated successful public relations skills, just the wording of it, like, I don't know how you demonstrate that on a resume or an application.
Yeah, that can be removed as well.
You can ask someone to explain what they've done in that regard in the interview process, but.
As far as how you show an awesome qualification.
That's why I say, I think there needs to be a little give and taking with respect to qualifications type.
Maybe have that just be more experience with successful public relations.
Yeah.
Or presenting to, and working with all constituents.
And supposing you have, somebody wants to apply, only has four years of successful experience, and.
Right, well, and typically qualifications, you, there's, there can be a little bit of, okay, maybe you don't have this, but you're really strong here and here and here, and maybe you just don't have that, yeah.
What about ISBA's template job descriptions? I think we have access to those too. I wonder, I forgot to even look at that today.
This is one of them.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, it might have been tweaked a little bit, but this is where this came from.
Okay, yeah.
So, I'll double-check to see if it's been updated since then.
I mean, we usually rewrite most of what they do anyways, but it's always good to have a springboard, you know, or.
We're hoping to be able to post this tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, yep. And is that something that we can do through ISBA also? I know they have the superintendent search, but, okay.
That was the intent, was to do it through ISBA, IASBO, and the IAFA site. Plus, I was gonna definitely put it out on our Facebook page, and Indeed.
Okay, yeah.
So, I just wanted to cast that net for our liking.
Yeah. What about the Idaho Department of Labor? Did we ever get bites from there, or?
Not usually that type of, not usually that type of profession. We usually don't get quality candidates, because they're just.
Yeah, I just know we have so many people coming from out of state and other areas, I just, I don't know where the non-locals look, or they're, yeah, and they come.
Where are they looking at?
That's usually like the Indeed-type department, yeah.
Do they, okay.
So, and then if they're interested, you know, in a particular school district, I mean, of course, they'll go to our website or our Facebook page, and our Facebook page, I mean, that stuff gets shared out like no others, so we have a pretty good following.
Okay, going under. How much interpreting of financial concerns of the district have you, Brian, been maintaining with the community? Yeah, that's number three.
In the general.
Yeah.
It depends on sort of what's happening, you know, obviously, when we had the long-range planning, from, I know I had done that here, but in other districts. And when levy elections come up and budget time, then actually you're involved quite a bit, depending on the level of interest the community has with discussing finance, and, you know, where we get our money from, and where we're spending our money, and what this levy is for, and things like that. Not levy years, or if you don't really have a long, a long-range planning on, then it's much less, so it can go in cycles. So, for here, definitely, when we're doing the long-range planning for the bond that we mentioned that did not work, but still, that was eighteen months of lead time, and a fifty-page report at the end, and I ended up compiling for some of the information for that. And so, you're involved at a lot of that type of level, because you're not just working with the community and administration and parents, but you start working with, you know, your municipal financial advisors on what, you know, the projections for what bond costs will really be, architects, things like that, and what the real, you know, where did you come up with that number to put the square footage projects and things like that, so.
And I know you've been invited down to the city, for example, to explain to the city council, you know, how some of our financial operations.
Yeah, I presented to the city, like, this year, and did that previously a couple of years ago too, in the chamber, and things like that, yeah.
On number six, I think it can end, prepare financial projections for the superintendent and the board, period. This just gets rough, I mean, it just needs to be squared. It's a bit...
Consized.
Yeah. There's another one, um... On number eleven, I believe that actually needs to be two.
Just make it...
Yeah, change that into...
Eleven and twelve.
Yeah.
What does this mean, number four here? Arrange for the internal auditing of school accounts. Is that just our annual audit, or...
Yes, I think that'd be part of it, the other thing is, we do do internal audits, um, you know, when Cindy Haperty was here, um, she would go out and, uh, do spot audits at, at the different buildings, not one every year, but we definitely do that to see if, are they following the finance guide, are they doing those things? Um, you know, if the auditor come, are we ready, um, and, you know, there's, and especially she did, has done that, let's say, if we have a new assistant bookkeeper or assistant treasurer at, at the schools, um, just to see, are, are they catching on on cash handling procedures, on journal entries and following, you know, the guidelines. Yeah, to try to catch anything before the auditors come.
Right, right, okay. Just keeping an eye on all of it, okay.
So, if this position isn't going to be, um, overseeing transportation, child nutrition, technology.
Right, number seven.
Then number seven, kind of...
That's right. And that is under this, uh, budget and financial reporting, number seven.
But they still have to look...
But they'll still have the, the reports, just don't, you just won't supervise the personnel side of it. He or she.
So, who's the child nutrition director?
Kevin.
Yeah.
But doesn't he work for Chartwells?
Mm-hmm.
So, how can we be supervising someone who is a non-employee?
Supervises the department.
Not according to this, he supervises the director and thereby the program. That's number two, under supervision.
You got a, you got a hybrid situation, I think, there, because even though Kevin's paid by Chartwells, you know, ninety-five percent of his responsibility, obviously, was within the district, and somebody has to oversee that.
Who would you rather him answer to?
Who, Kevin?
Kevin. Mm-hmm.
Why don't, I mean...
We contract with the, with Chartwells, so...
Right.
Who would he answer to when it is district?
Well, he works with the district.
Right, so who does he answer to? Us, the superintendent?
Well, I think he answers to Chartwells. 'Cause he's not our employee, he's a, on contract.
On dis- regarding districts, regarding district stuff, no. He would answer to us, we contract with them.
Okay.
He being a representative of Chartwells.
Right.
Would be directed by somebody from the district on what the district wants and is contracting for.
Okay, I, I'm, I understand what you're saying, and I understand the collaborative relationship, just the language of direct supervision implies that, to me, it implies a hire-and-fire situation, which I would think if we have a problem with Kevin, we have to go to Chartwells, not to Kevin.
Maybe you could change this to oversight.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that's all I'm saying, is just, it, it's a mincing of words, but, I don't know, I don't know about that.
So, change direct supervision to direct oversight?
Oversight supervision.
Well, he would be responsible for the oversight of the child nutrition director and the district's child nutrition program. I think all that other language can come out of that sentence.
And then thereby one?
Yes.
Brian, are there other reports, um, when this says prepare appropriate state and federal reports, are those all financial, or are those some that aren't financial?
Um, some may not be financial, I mean, there's quite a few State Department reports that we do that generally go to business managers as a standard practice, that are necessarily sometimes financed. You know, like, um, you know, the school building square footage report and, it's all sorts of ones that sort of come our way. Um, the transportation report, a lot of times you help with that, especially the claim report is like a joint effort between the Transportation Director and Finance Department, 'cause it involves both, it's pretty complex, so... Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, and then you get a lot of compliance reports with special education and federal programs that blend between the finance part of those category programs and other compliance parts, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
What were you reading from, Randy?
Oh, I just was go- I was, um, back on, uh, number seven, monitoring financial status and prepare appropriate, I just was wondering if the, those reports were all financial or if they went beyond the financial?
Do you ever prepare applications for funds and financial reports for agencies that do not have anything to do with public school funds? I just am curious why we're saying, uh, by state, yeah, having jurisdiction over public school funds, that just seems like a, an interesting, it doesn't exist.
Six, right here.
Yep.
Number six.
Yeah.
Under, uh, the budget and financial reporting.
Am I missing something, Randy? Why do we have to have that in there? It just seems redundant.
Yeah.
Well, I, uh, maybe I'm mistaken, I would interpret that, for example, when Brian has to provide information to the county so that we can receive our tax collections that would fit into that category.
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, why can't we just not say he needs to prepare for applications for funds and financial reports as required by state and federal agencies, period? I mean, does it have to say having jurisdiction over public school funds? That doesn't, I don't understand what that's there for.
I think it's just qualifying the report, or who the reports are to, what agencies they're to, so in other words, it's not gonna, it's not gonna create financial reports for the DA, you know?
What do they ask?
Yeah, well, it'd be records requests, and they could probably just print something that exists, there you go.
Okay. Anything else, Randy?
Uh-uh, cannot be seen.
All righty. Any other further discussion on the job description? Okay, then you can move forward with it.
Send it.
Do you mind those changes?
Okay, on that, then I just need a motion to enter into a session, which means the Idaho Code seventy-four to a six-one D.
So, I'll second then.
Having a motion and a second, we need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chiversen?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Bay?
Yes.
And Trustee Kumbi?
Yes.
In case you couldn't tell by the...
Bring your kid to work day?
She works here, she's, she's a district employee.
Yeah. Okay, so we've come out of executive session, um, I do need to, we do have one item that's actionable, would anybody like to bring forth a motion?
I move that, uh, we approve the job announcement for, um, the open CFO position, um, and for the superintendent to post the opening with the job description.
Clear.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
I think you got the cart before the horse, but...
Oh.
Without approving directly the resignation.
You have to accept the resignation.
Oh, yes, 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 we do, yes, I'm sorry, I will amend my motion to, uh, my first motion will be to accept the resignation of the CFO of Lakeland Joint School District.
Second. Having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, any other motions?
Yes, now the motion to, uh, post the job opening and have the superintendent go ahead and start the search for, replaceable.
Second.
Having a motion. What?
Nothing.
Are you a girl?
Word is, let her open.
All right. Having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And that concludes the meeting at seven twenty-five.
Congratulations.
Good job. I know.
She's always like, what do you do?
It was just that he missed out on...